Like really try and be the best at whatever you do. You could change your mind in the snap of a finger. The aim is small, but the miss will be small as well. Sure, you don't hit the third button down, but you will find yourself probably touching that target somewhere. Doing things in the community, be salt, be light, you know, be that influence. Really just influencing every aspect of our lives.
Welcome to the Driven Leader Podcast. I'm John Patterson from Patterson Autos and we are so grateful to be able to share stories, both internally with our teammates and externally with people in the community about driven leaders. And we define leaders as people of influence. So whether you are a person that's managing one, two, three people, just yourself, or managing hundreds or thousands, we look about influence. And today we are so lucky, so lucky to have Chad Williams with us. A true driven leader on so many levels. He's a bestselling author. He's a Navy SEAL. He's a city council member in Huntington Beach. He's an absolute person of influence throughout Orange County. But before we get into that, we want to have some fun conversation with him. So welcome Chad. It's so great to have you here today.
I'm super stoked to be here with you, John. Thank you.
You know, we got a chance to meet, uh, what about this time last year? And I was so just humbled to meet you, your, your story, your family, your upbringing in Huntington Beach. Before we get into many things that you've done throughout your life, bring us up to speed. Who are you? What's y'all about?
Yeah, so born and raised in Huntington Beach, California. It's a, I think a great place to grow up. It's where I'm raising my kids now. And I think that I just kind of always had this drive in a way that was planted in me. It was like a seed thought from my dad. It really didn't take much, but like whenever we were, you know, playing in the field, you know, doing sports, throwing a baseball around or skateboarding, it was just this drive to like really try and be the best at whatever you do. Like if it's a race, try and get first place. And he instilled this mentality in me that it's totally possible, like you can do that. And it's kind of like a reoccurring theme because that would eventually play out, you know, in SEAL training. A really big part of our SEAL creed is that it's about being a common man, but with uncommon desire to succeed. And I think some of the good news to that is it doesn't really come down to DNA. You know, so many people kind of write themselves off or just think like this is the, the hand I've been dealt in life. And you know, some people either have it or they don't, but it's really not in the genetics so much as it's something that's inside of the mind, the heart, the soul of a person. And the good news about that is like, well, you cannot really change your DNA, although maybe some people are trying to alter it now with those.
It's a whole different program, right?
Yeah, you can't really do much about that, but I really think you could change your mind in the snap of a finger. And so that was something that was kind of instilled in me very early on. It's always very competitive with like the sports, whether it be baseball or skateboarding. I eventually got sponsored by Van Shoes and did a little, uh, competing. And I love playing around in the ocean and, you know, doing some surfing out there. And so just a Huntington Beach, you know, hometown kid.
Love it. And you know, you did share that with me when we were chatting and it's certainly in your book about your skateboarding. So you got very involved in that whole skateboarding scene when you were a teenager, right?
Yeah, whatever I would get into, I would really get into. I would become obsessed and laser focused on it. And so with the, the skateboarding at, at a time, you know, I wanted to be pro. And so in a way I was sort of a, an amateur pro. I got paid a little bit of money to go travel around and skate and compete. And it was really cool to, you know, be in junior high and high school and be sponsored by Van Shoes.
You were really popular around campus.
Oh yeah, I had the shoes before they came out, you know, and plastering the walls with, you know, the stickers and everything like that. But you know, eventually I guess I just kind of got a little bit burned out on that. And, and then it comes down to like figuring out what's next. And so that really took me through that junior high, high school years. And then I'm entering into, you know, the local community college, Golden West. And suddenly now I'm not aiming at anything anymore. And that was a terrible place to be in. You know, it's been said, you know, if you aim at nothing, you will hit it. And really for the, for the first time in life, I felt like I was aiming at nothing and I certainly was hitting nothing. And this was sort of a foreign experience of just this thought or this realization of like the track that I'm on right now, watching all my peers pass me by, I'm failing all my classes just because I have no drive anymore. I have nothing that I'm going towards. I just realized I'm turning out to be a loser. And so I, I remember the day pulling into the school parking lot thinking, I gotta turn this around. I gotta figure out like, what is that next thing that's going to compel me and drive me? And you know, part of me wanted to go be an Alaskan crab fisherman. I'm watching that on TV.
Oh, absolutely. The big waves and the, you know, the, the heavy duty, the cold weather. It's amazing.
Yeah, I want to do something big and dangerous like that. I want to leave my mark and they get paid a lot of money to do it as well. I want to do the thing that a lot of people are afraid to do.
Yeah.
And that's when the other idea entered my head about joining the military and not just that being a part of the most elite going through that most difficult, grueling military training. I want to be a Navy SEAL. And just, I think to demonstrate how quickly somebody could really make up their mind about something and flip. I'm going from this kid that's failing out of all my classes. I'm about to go fail finals. That's what I'm at school that day to go do. And probably within about less than 30 seconds, probably within 15 seconds, I made up my mind to pivot. And I've got this drive now, I'm going to go become a Navy SEAL. Sometimes I think people think it takes a lot of forethought and I think it is good to think things through. You ought to consider like what you're getting into, but I mean, I was able to really just flip my heart and my mind around that immediately. And then it was gonna, I think, show through the test of time. Actions speak louder than words. So I could tell people like my dad, hey, I'm going to go be a Navy SEAL or any of my friends. And they would kind of laugh it off, you know, but the actions will speak louder than words.
Yeah, I can only imagine. So, you know, you're really successful throughout high school and different sporting activities and that type of stuff. But you've got this kind of period of time where it's not exactly as planned. And you come home and you tell your folks, hey, look, this is what I'm going to do. That must've been a, like an aha moment for them where they look at you and go, I mean, come on, what's going on here?
Right, because they have seen me get pretty obsessed with things, but ultimately, you know, I never really stuck with it for very, very long. Right? Like all of these things I've started in one way or another, like I kind of closed the book on all of them. And I just needed to be in this place of almost going through this wilderness experience and wandering around, not knowing to really capture that vision too. I think it's not necessarily a bad thing to be in that sort of wilderness. In fact, the wilderness, it seems like it precedes a lot of greatness. I mean, I could think of it just like looking in the stories of the Bible, you know, Moses, before he had the great honor of, you know, leading the children of Israel, you know, over into the promised land, you know, over the Jordan River into the land of milk and honey. Like he spent 40 years out in the wilderness on his own, in a sense, to kind of do a little bit of thinking. And I think that God is working on him. The very children of Israel had to wander for 40 years before they crossed that Jordan. Or you think of these greats that I look up to, you know, these prophets like Elijah or John the Baptist. He was known as a man of the wilderness, a crazy man out there before he had the honor of, you know, making straight the way of the Lord. Or I think of even Jesus himself, you know, he spent 40 days and 40 nights out in the wilderness before he started, you know, his big campaign. You know, his itinerary preaching ministry. So I think sometimes being in that wilderness, desert, hard ground place is exactly where we need to be before we really could be used, the way I look at it, that God would want to use us. And this just kind of brings to mind, uh, an anonymous quote and hopefully I can hit it. It's a poem, but I mean, I'm just kind of off the cuff here. I think it ties in in terms of just how God works, I think in the life of a person that is going through those tough times and not maybe understanding really why. But there is a purpose in all of it and he's present. So it goes like this, it says that, "When God wants to drill a man and thrill a man and skill a man, when God wants to mold a man to play the noblest part, when he yearns with all of his heart to create so great and bold a man that all the world should be amazed, watch his methods and watch his ways. How he ruthlessly perfects whom he royally elects, how he hammers him and hurts him, and with bite he blows converts him into trial shapes of clay, which only God understands. While man's tortured heart is crying and he lifts beseeching hands, how God bends, but he never breaks when it's man's good that he undertakes. And how he uses whom he chooses and with every purpose fuses him, by every act induces him to try his splendor out. God knows what he is about." And so we just really might not understand like, God, what are you up to in my life?
Oh wait, that is amazing. Well, way to recite that one. I think you nailed it.
Yeah, well, thank you. It was one worth putting to, to memory.
Yeah.
It was one worth looking at on a daily basis. You know, at certain times in life, you go through these seasons, you go through times where you're basking in the sunlight. You get to take it in. And this is like a line out of the Count of Monte Cristo. Like one day you're basking in the sunlight, the next day you're going to be dashed upon the rocks. You know, it's, it's what you do when those storms come that really determine what type of man you are.
Well, and I think the other thing too is to be present because oftentimes we're caught up in this chaotic world of to-do lists and what next and what have you. And, and when you have that opportunity to take a step back, to get a little bit peace and identify, okay, what am I really doing? What, what could I be doing? And whether it's, you know, a day, a week, a month, weeks, years, whatever, to be able to identify and self-assess where you really are and what you could be, I think that's when you can do some of your best work.
Oh yeah. You come out of that spot, you know, you're in a bad place. Well, the greater the need, you want to get out, the greater the need, the greater the result.
Amen.
Then you come up with, with a target in your crosshairs and like we're taught in SEAL training from the very beginning, it's a fundamental of shooting. And if you think about it, shooting is all about hitting a goal. You're trying to hit a target or we're taught aim small, miss small. And so the idea behind that isn't small thinking, it's the more particular you could be now about whatever it is, it's in your crosshairs, the better shot you have of hitting it. If I'm just aiming at an enemy insurgent that has bad intentions to harm my entire team and my goal is to touch him with something somewhere on him, what happens if I miss? I never hit my target or my goal. But what if I say, forget just trying to touch them somewhere? What I'm trying to do is I'm, I'm being very particular. I'm looking for that second or third button down on his T-shirt. Now that's what I'm aiming at. I'm not aiming at him, I'm aiming at the third button down. My aim is small.
Wow.
The aim is small and perhaps I miss, maybe I don't succeed in hitting the third button down. The aim is small, but the miss will be small as well. Sure, you don't hit the third button down, but you will find yourself probably touching that target somewhere.
Yeah.
And that crosses over, it traverses into, I think, everything in life. The more particular you could be about whatever it is in your crosshairs. And we have many different roles in life, whether that be, you know, what type of spouse you are, what type of father you are, what type of businessman you are, what type of fellow citizen you are. You should identify like what is your aim small, miss small for each of these roles, each of these hats that you're wearing. And all that's going to do is it's going to give you a better shot of actually hitting the target that you're going for.
I get it.
And what's the alternative? Aim at nothing. You'll hit that.
So let's talk about that. So forget about the fact that you are, were having a, a not your best situation at community college. You go and I know there's a long, I mean, boy, I've both read and listened to your, your book Seal of God, but the, the amount of training that goes into it, you think about people say, hey, I'm going to go run a marathon. Well, you know, go and run a marathon. You think about the training that goes into that, okay, I'm going to run a mile. Then mile becomes two, becomes four, becomes six, becomes 12. And then maybe I'm going to do a half marathon and so on and so forth. But I mean, a Navy SEAL, it takes that whole marathon training to the next level times a hundred. So walk us through what that looks like. Cause you know, one of the things I title each of these different leadership episodes on specific themes and yours is fortitude in the face of adversity. And I mean, I can only imagine what that looked like to a surfer out of Huntington Beach.
Yeah, let me try and approach this maybe kind of a unique way. And it'll kind of touch on how you and I even got connected to begin with, which is something that was started off. It's in one of the chapters of the book, but you know, if life had continued on, there's more chapters that certainly could be written that ought to be included in that book that led to us, I think I've connected the dots, how we like originally connected. So, you know, to make it through SEAL training, it does have the reputation of being the most difficult military training. And it just comes down to the numbers do speak for themselves. We have the highest attrition rate, which means the highest dropout rate. And typically the dropouts, they call it a, a DOR. It's a drop on request. People are voluntarily giving up and quitting. People that said, I'll die before I quit. Now they're saying, I don't really want to do this anymore. And they signify that by ringing a brass bell three times in front of the whole class. Uh, so the toughest parts of SEAL training be like hell week. They keep you up for five and a half days long. You get four hours of sleep. That's not per night, that's four hours for the next five and a half days. You will wind up covering over 200 miles on your feet during that time. And that's not the luxury of running around with like tennis shoes and, you know, running shorts. You're running around with camouflage on that's rubbing and grinding against your skin with all of the salt water and the beach sand. Not a dry moment this entire time. So just imagine what that salt water and sand does to your skin. But then you're also carrying around a telephone log or a boat on top of your head. That boat is so heavy that it rubs through the hair, through the skin and the top of your head. And a class prior to mine, a guy broke his neck underneath one of these boats. So kind of give a sense of the constant pressure and bouncing on top of your head. I mean, all it takes is a few of these guys ducking their heads simultaneously.
Yeah.
All that weight, you know, goes on top of you. And then you're getting thrown out into the Pacific Ocean. I went through in February, the coldest month out of the year. You don't get to wear a wet suit. And so that water is so cold, it takes your breath away. Imagine being out there, two, three o'clock in the morning, dark hours. And you look like you're hanging on to a jackhammer. We call it being jackhammering cold. And so on top of all this physical exertion and sleep deprivation, it leads into a funny thing to look back on, but not so fun going through it. Hallucinations.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I, I grew up watching Ninja Turtles and I mean, I've just, I'm out there in the water with Donatello popping his head up and looking at me. And you know, other guys have got their own problems. They're calling out things that they see that you know, aren't really there. So looking back on it, you know, that's kind of a, a funny thing to look back on, a pastime favorite. But at the same time, it's not a favorite going through it. That's just a five and a half day picture of part of this, like two-year-long pipeline of me hanging it through. So as I said, the numbers, they do speak for themselves. Out of 173 guys in my class by graduation day, there's only 13 of that original class number still standing there.
So the, just to think that you could be in a Navy SEAL scenario, 173, so some of the most fit looking guys I can, I can possibly imagine. And of these guys that are dialed in and, and saying, hey, I'm ready to do this, way less than what, what is that? About 5% of them end up making it through.
Right.
And that is just unreal.
Yeah, it's, you gotta want it really so bad that you are willing to die before you, you quit. And the instructors assure you, hey, we're not going to kill you. You know, so just, you know, you're in our hands. Do everything we tell you to do. Don't quit and you'll make it to the other end. So it's funny because I thought, you know, after telling my folks like, man, if I want to be a Navy SEAL, I gotta start running, swimming. I gotta do the pull-ups and the push-ups. And you know, here I am, it's like my 18, 19-year-old brain, you know, I'm thinking, I gotta be able to like jump off the Huntington Beach pier and evade getting busted by like the lifeguards or the cops. And so I actually made it a regular practice where I was jumping off that pier. I mean, I, I probably did it more than 50 times without any trouble. My mistake was I brought a friend one day and I warned him that the water's cold, it'll take your breath away, but don't go hanging on to those pylons under the pier, just swim in, you'll get cut up.
Yeah.
What's he do? He's hanging on to the pylons, he's getting all cut up. Next thing you know, there's a rescue that is ensued.
Oh yes.
And lifeguards go get him, they bring him in, he's all cut up and bloody. The water makes it look worse. They're bandaging him, he's like got the, the blanket around him. And it's just like one of those scenes out of a movie, right? It's like the, the ambulance is there, they got the blanket, the warming blanket on him. And I realized they don't know that he jumped off. I think they think he's just a swimmer. Well, the problem was, is I go walking in, you know, like, hey buddy, we gotta get out of here. They're going to figure this out. Somebody off the pier yells, hey, there's those guys that jumped off the pier.
Oh, of course.
And now this lifeguard's trying to corral us and you know, hey, you guys are going to, you're going to get cited for this. And I'm like thinking, this is as close as you're going to get to me. I'm, I'm about to run. I tell my buddy, let's go. And he's too cold and he's like, just go without me. I can't leave a man behind. So I sit around and we wind up getting tickets. And I was furious because I had just been with a recruiter that told me basically paperwork's filed. From this point forward, you gotta be clean as far as the record goes. Don't even get a speeding ticket, right? Any of this could really mess things up from this point forward. Well, now I'm getting a citation.
Right.
So I'm laying into this lifeguard. I'm like, I can't believe you're giving me a ticket. You didn't even have me. I basically turned myself in. I walked over here and I'm getting mouthy. I'm like, I'm going to go do something with my life. You know what this is going to do? Like you're just a lifeguard, I'm going to go be a Navy SEAL. Well, this lifeguard goes, oh really? He goes, well, I know the XO over at SEAL Team One, do you want me to let them know you're coming? And I just zipped up like, nope, I'm sorry, you know, quiet. Well, that happened, that's recorded in the book. This is how you and I actually got connected. I don't know if you've known this, if I've shared this with you. Fast forward more than 10 years later, I'm out now, you know, I was a SEAL, I'm out. And there's a lifeguard down at the beach and he calls me over. He says, hey Chad. I'm like, how's this guy got my name right now? Maybe he overheard me share my name, calls me over, he goes, do you remember me? Go, no, I don't remember you. He goes, you don't remember me? I'm like, no, I don't remember. He goes, I gave you a ticket for jumping off the pier. And I'm like, oh man. And immediately I went into just an apology.
Right.
I'm so sorry for how I was back then. I want you to know something that since then, like I've become a Christian. I was actually out there doing street witnessing.
Yeah.
So I thought maybe he overheard me share my name. That's how he got my name, witnessing. So he was observing, he says, I noticed. He goes, well, yeah, I'm a Christian too. And I don't know if you'd be interested in this or not, but I can get you into all of the high schools in Orange County through a group called FCA.
Yeah.
Well, at that time, that's precisely what I'd been tasked with doing. I was working with a church and they said, we need you to get into the high schools. And I was failing at it. And they're saying, come on Navy SEAL, can't you figure it out? And I'm like, God, I'm failing at my first like objective I've been given.
Right.
I'm your property, your property's in danger, you need to come through. Well, next thing you know, God's sense of humor, he uses a lifeguard named Chris Clark. They gave me a ticket for jumping off the pier 10 years ago to be the one that would open up the door, connect me with Adam Goodman.
Yeah.
And Adam Goodman is the one that connected me with Mr. John Patterson here. And I mean, honestly, just through that, that ticket, uh, jumping off the pier and the doors that God has opened through Chris Clark, I, I can't even keep track of them.
And I happen to know Chris Clark very well and, and Adam Goodman, I mean, two of the best guys. So you could do a whole lot worse than connecting with those guys. So God definitely had a hand in connecting you with, with them because, uh, boy, what great guys, what top-notch people. And it is, right? You never know. Adversity will, you had, you had a ton of adversity going through the, the Navy SEALs and obviously making it into the final 13. And, and then, you know, one thing that I think a lot of people would say is, hey, what inspired you to write a book? I mean, to, to write a book about that experience. I imagine that the Navy SEAL experience is wonderful and different for so many different folks. But what was the driving force behind being able to share that? And you know, my wife and I both read the book. I've given the book out to at least a hundred people. They've all read the book. I mean, so you've made an impact in so many people's lives just by writing it. But what gave you the, the thought process to even go there?
I, I kind of think of one of the first opening pages where you just kind of write like a dedication. And one of those things was in honor, memory of my mentor, Scott Halvinston. And there's a big story to be told, you know, there, uh, just what a mentor, what a second father he was, you know, how he invested into me and really helped me to get prepared and what an extraordinary life. You know, he lived and tragically, uh, he was killed overseas just literally handful of days before I went in. My last conversation with him on a phone call was him telling me, Junior, I'm going to, I want to tell you something I've never told anyone I've ever told before. He says, I know you're going to make it through SEAL training. And to hear that from somebody that I revered and respected more than anyone else on the earth at that time, I couldn't wait to make them proud. And you know, fast forward a handful of days, I'd see him on a TV screen, uh, being hung upside down from the Afridi's River Bridge and his body set on fire as this group of insurgents is chanting, "Fulgus is the graveyard of Americans." And so that was a life-changing moment for me right there. He became a huge motivation for me to, in a sense, almost like, you know, not literally, but in a sense, like fulfill those words, fulfill the prophecy, do what he said that I would do. And I want to do it in honor, memory of him and I want to get some get back. I want to, you know, I want to do something for my, my mentor overseas. So he was a huge motivation in terms of writing the book too. But what really brought it all together was Ray Comfort. I figured maybe I'd write a book one day, like 30 years from now.
Sure.
You know?
I mean, you're still a young guy. I mean, come on.
Yeah. And, uh, and Ray, he made the point that you need to do this, you need to do it now, and you need to do it for a far greater purpose. And that greater purpose is sort of a, a Matthew 6:33, seek first the kingdom of God and his righteousness. You need to take this story that people will be attracted to and they will read, but what you do, what you put on the pedestal on top of all of it is you put the gospel, you put Christ on top of it. And so with that in mind, I saw it's, it's important not to hesitate. You gotta be decisive and you know, the sooner you get this out there with the gospel, the sooner you're spreading the gospel out there. So it's not something to wait 30 years on, you know, because there's more people like I was, you know, that you just need to hear that message once. You know, and everything can pivot and really change.
Seize the day, go after it while you're thinking about it and, and make your massive impact early on. And it's been a huge platform for you.
Oh, I, I don't know how life would have turned out now without that. You know, it's amazing. Some of the things, the people that I've met that I look back and I mean, they are the pillars, you know, from Scott Halvinston to like even a Chris Clark and, and Adam Goodman, and even yourself, like you don't even know the differences that all of you made, like in the process of me even running for city council in Huntington Beach. And it's like, all of these are like irreducibly complex. Like if you took it out, like the whole thing would have fallen apart. It's like these, these pillars, right? In life. And so yeah, the timing of the book was God's timing.
It's amazing. Before you did a, a talk at our leadership lunch at Mesa Verde in October, I, I was talking to another guy and I said, yeah, we're going to be doing this leadership lunch. And oh, oh, who's going to be a speaker? And I said, well, this, this gentleman I met, he wrote this book Seal of God. He goes, wait a minute, are you talking about Chad Williams? And I said, yeah. He goes, oh my God, I've been wanting to see that guy speak. I, I read the book, I'm so excited. So we had a, a packed house of 200 people and, and you know, you've done that over and over again, these different rooms that you're able to talk to and share your story. Talk about a guy that's been able to impact lives. I mean, certainly your impact on, you know, your patriotism by being a Navy SEAL and thank you for your service. But you've been able to take that and share that situation, that example, that, that drive, that fortitude through a book and your faith. And now your ability to talk in front of, you know, hundreds at a time, it inspires people. It, to this day, I've talked to, you know, dozens and dozens of people that attended that lunch, lunch back in October, what, six, eight months ago? And they're like, oh God, we gotta get him back. It was so good. You just filled so many souls. And I think you're right, by writing that book at a young age, it gave you a platform to be able to inspire others and you have. So I mean, just honestly, I just want to let you know, I'm sure others have told you this, but it's impacted my life and it's impacted hundreds of people that I know just from that one experience.
That makes me think of, uh, Mark Twain's quote, how he says, I could live about two months off a good compliment.
Yeah. Well, that, you know, let me tell you, I've got, I've got plenty of those. So I'll give you a couple of two-month runs here. So, oh my goodness. Well, you know, for those of you listening that are friends of mine, and if you haven't read Seal of God, just let me know and I'll send the book to you because I think that much of it. But you know, we've got so much that I want to cover just from Navy SEALs and, and your, the challenges associated with diving into that and then writing the book and sharing your testimony. You know, by the way, you know, I don't, spoiler alert, that book is about the good, the bad and the ugly, about all the things that you, you dealt with in the Navy SEAL. Is that a fair statement to say?
Absolutely, yeah. Warts and all.
Yeah, absolutely. But honesty was so wonderful and, and I think that that's one of the reasons why the book resonates with so many people because it's so honest and it's so, it's just, it's compelling. It was, it's a, it's a great read, but let's, let's kind of take the next step. So, okay, you've got this guy that was a Navy SEAL. You've got this guy that is committed to faith and wrote a book and, and is able to connect with fellowship of Christian athletes and, and get a chance to talk to a bunch of, you know, young aspiring teens. And then something gets into your noggin to say, hey, look, I want to do more and give back to the community. And then you pivot and start thinking about, okay, how am I going to get involved with the city that I grew up in Huntington Beach? Walk our listeners through that transition because that's not a logical play either.
I think my life has taken a lot of directions that I never imagined that it would, you know? Even things that maybe I contemplated of like things I would never do.
Right.
Things I would never do. Get behind a pulpit. Things I would never do, get involved in politics. And I've had so many people try and persuade me to get involved, to go run for city council, to go run for this or that. And I'm like, you're wasting your oxygen even talking to me right now. I feel pity for you, like just stop because it's not going to happen. And that's totally God's sense of humor. And now I'm terrified to ever say that I absolutely won't do something if it's something I don't want to do. Because I'm worried that it'll just trigger the Lord to be like, all right, that's your next thing. So I'm very wary of doing that because I did that with this. A lot of people would say, you need to get involved in city council and you should run. I'm like, no, I'm happy, the lane that I'm in right now, it's ministry. That's kind of, that's the way I'm doing things in the community, be salt, be light, you know, be that influence. And then it just really hit me one day, just kind of seeing the way I looked at it is that like the community in Huntington Beach was no longer the same town I was born and raised in. I'm bringing my kids to pastime favorite places, I'm buying my son one of his first skateboards at Jack's Surf Shop, going across PCH to, you know, let's go roll around on the boardwalk, like let's go try it out right away, like let's not even drive home. And we go cross that street to, you know, the north side of the pier, that little amphitheater area. And that was a great spot to like take a break. And I remember my wife used to work at Jack's and we would have like her lunch break over there, you had a Subway sandwich and I just look around and it was like not even a, it was a shadow realm of what it used to be. At the time, it was the transience, it was like the mental illness and the, the substance abuse. It was like the addicts and it was just out of hand. And I realized, you know, I've just brought my children into what I thought would be a pastime favorite place. And, and really they're witnessing things that I wish they didn't have to see right now. And before I could even escape that situation and turn them around, you know, that it just gets thrown right in our face. One of these guys pops up out of nowhere, he's screaming in my face on top of his lungs and my son's asking me, he's like, my son's at my hip, like daddy, daddy, is this, he's tugging on me, this is, is this guy gonna fight you, is he gonna fight you? And I remember just thinking, what has happened to this city?
Right.
And I got upset and I thought of those words, all that's required for evil, the triumph is for good men to stand back and do nothing. And it wasn't long before I first thought, somebody should do something about this. And it probably was, you know, half a second into that thought, God's like, you think so, how about you?
Exactly.
And I go, oh no.
Be planned, God laughs, right?
Yep, and so I kind of put myself in the crosshairs of that and that was really the starting point, you know? It's like the town that I was born and raised in, that I'm raising my family in, that there's many other young people, you know, being raised up in. And I also kind of thought of Nehemiah at the wall where he talked about how, you know, he took a stand and he says like, it's time, remember the Lord, don't be afraid and fight for your brother. You know, fight for your countrymen, fight for your wives, fight for your sons, fight for your daughters, like fight for your household, fight for your family. And so I can't fix it all, but just like that wall, you know, that was built in Nehemiah's time, I could be responsible for that little bit of piece of wall that's in front, you know, of my household. And what that is, is, you know, that hometown, born and raised in. So with that, and then my pastor independently, not even knowing that, within a matter of days, says, I want to pray with you about something. I want to pray with you about, I think you should run for city council. I just honestly thought of the passage where it says, by the witness of two or more things shall be established. And I just knew this is where God's taking me.
I love it, well, and, and you know, and it wasn't easy, right? You know, it was one of those things where kind of a, a pre-existing establishment was a little bit put off by, you know, I guess a political outsider, if you will, kind of jumping in and you had plenty of hoops to jump through. And all I know is you had a bunch of supporters and my friends and my team at Huntington Beach Maza and, and uh, you know, you're not gonna toot your horn, but the end result of that come, you know, early November was, if I remember correctly, uh, from everything that I read, like one of the highest vote getting scenarios ever in the history of the city, correct?
It ended up being the most votes ever in the history of the city and I, we blasted through it by about 10,000 votes, the previous record.
I remember texting you and going, going through that entire time and I was watching, you know, they have the different counts on the different, you know, all the different offices, you know, across the United States and, you know, all the different, you know, local and national deals. And I'd look at the race in Huntington Beach and then there was you at the top and then there was a gap and then there was a lot of other folks. So uh, that was, uh, it was very gratifying for your friends, I know your family or, but for me, as, as somebody that has gotten to know you, it was very wonderful to see that others saw the, the great opportunity that, that you could create for the city and, and the great good that you could do in the city. And so, you know, congratulations face to face for that massive victory.
Yeah, thank you so much. And you know, that was just the start, that north side of the pier, it opened up my eyes to just a, a lot of the, the evils that were taking place like in our city. The way that, you know, even, you know, our youth, our children are being exposed to like sexually graphic content in the library. That's a fight that still continues on to this day, things that I won't even, you know, speak about, unspeakable things. And it's all being, you know, pushed on them under the cloak of, you know, well, this is, this is education.
Yeah.
This is obscenity and, and it's crazy, cause obscenity laws or violations have actually been lifted from a couple of specific places. And that would be the school libraries and the libraries within the cities. This is the kind of stuff that if you actually took it and you texted it or shared it with a minor, you would be.
You're being drugged, yeah.
Yeah, some of these books are, they're not even allowed in prisons, right? Just terrible stuff. And so they are, they're really coming for our kids in that sense. And I, I think of Jesus' words again, like anyone that would lead any of these little ones astray that believes in me, it'd be better for them to wrap a millstone around their neck and be cast and drowned, you know, into the sea. So we have such a great responsibility to be defenders, especially for those that cannot speak up for themselves because they are so innocent. And uh, I think of Ezekiel 3:17 where God says to Ezekiel, this principle just holds so true. He says, son of man, I've made you a watchman. He says, when I give you a word, you know, to wicked people to flee from their wicked way and you don't warn them? You don't give them the word, I, I told you to go give them? He says, they'll die in their iniquity, but their blood I require at your hand. There's a sort of culpability there, it's a depraved indifference to just stand back and watch when you know the right thing to do and you can do something about it, but you don't do something about it. And so that has really become just the mission, the obsession, it's become my aim small, miss small. Like this might be really the very reason why, you know, I've even be put, been put into office. It's a four year seat and I'm figuring out about four months into it, like this might really be the whole thing right here, this battle that's taking place like in the library, because it's a battle over right and wrong. It's not left or right, it's right and wrong, it's good and evil. And it's going down pretty quick here, we got a special election coming up, you know, by the time people are watching this, it might even be over.
Now, we're gonna get this out quickly, so we'll, uh, we'll get this out and supporting that cause. So you bring up a, an interesting point though, as, as opposed to, you know, so many people get elected and, you know, who knows what happens from there? But faith in politics, right? Clearly you're a man of faith and kind of balancing that faith piece with the political piece. You know, I imagine, you know, I, back to fortitude, fortitude in the face of adversity, there's gotta be a little bit of that going on in that space as well.
Absolutely, and I think it's truly like one of the most American things you can do is allow your faith to influence. You know, the way that you think about things, the way that you look at things, the way that you vote about things. And there's no reason why it can't influence like the policies that I come up with. It's not an established religion, you know, for the state, that's what the establishment cause is all about. The whole like separation of church and state is something that's not even really found in the constitution, that was in a letter. And the idea behind that was actually to be protecting the church from the influences like of the state, right? Right, the irony, but it's really become this thing like as if you just, you can't even go there, right? It's like, well, people have all kinds of influences in their life and certainly like, uh, the forefathers of our nation, they were influenced by like their Christian values and you see that in our judicial system, you see it all throughout the constitution. You see it like in the inalienable rights that we've been endowed with by our creator. It's all like embedded there, it's implied there, there's nothing wrong with allowing that influence in your life to be an influence in terms of like the policies that you shape or form. So yeah, I want to have the mind of Christ, you know, I, the way that I look at things, I want to see things the way that, that Jesus sees things. And I just kind of go back to like that whole, what would Jesus do in a situation, you know, like this? So yeah, huge influence on my life and he expects us to be an influence out there in the world. And that's why he says, you know, you are the salt of the earth. And he says, if the salt loses its flavor, what is it then? It's good for nothing, it's to be thrown out and trampled underfoot by men. And he says, you're the light of the world. He says, the city that's set on a hill can't be hidden, nor do they light a lamp and put it under a basket. Like who would do that, light a lamp and then you put it under a basket? He goes, no, you put it on a lampstand and it gives light to all who are in the house. And then he goes on to say, let your light so shine before men that they may see your good works and glorify your Father who is in heaven. Salt, especially in his day was a preservative, they didn't have refrigeration. So to keep meat from rotting and decaying, they would put salt on it as that preservative. And we are to be that moral preservative. You look around and we are in a world that is unfortunately just morally rotting and decaying. It is not what it was certainly even 50 years ago, you know, we can't stop it, but we can certainly be a preservative. You know, and that light is to shed light on the darkness that is happening, you know, in the world. And so that's our responsibility, that's our duty, right? And that's the duty that I desire to fulfill in the different roles, you know, that I wear, you know, as a pastor at a church, as the husband, as a father, as a, I hate to say it, I think of myself more like a patriot, but as a politician, you know, it should be really just influencing every aspect of our lives.
Well, and, and you know, you, you mentioned, so you're married, you have a wife and two children?
Yep.
How are they navigating all of this newfound, you know, influence in the city of Huntington Beach, how's that going?
It's a balance, you know, I, I think that my children thankfully, like they're young enough to where it's like not their world, you know, so much. They're kind of knowing, I've been able to balance it out enough to where I'm, I'm home, you know? Like somehow God has just been working it all out, where I'm not like an absent dad, they're not, you know, somebody told me that was trying to talk me out of it, that, cause they wanted somebody else to run, I found out later. They're kind of being a little bit of a Judas, but they said, your children will become political orphans if you do this. It's like, nope, that certainly hasn't happened.
Now, you just kind of figure out how to navigate it and your priorities in the right place.
Yeah, I'm going fish for my son right after this.
Right on, well, perfect, well, I'm not gonna keep it, it is Good Friday today when we're recording it. So get a chance to, uh, to celebrate resurrection weekend, which is great. So I want to be mindful of your time, but let's talk about what's next. So you know, you're a guy that aim small, miss small, you're a guy that is not afraid to take on a big hairy audacious goal, as they say in Good to Great. So skateboarder, competitive kid, Navy SEAL, author at a young age, pastor at a church, super involved with the youth, now city councilman, uh, in probably if not the most influential city in Orange County, one of the most influential cities in Orange County and in the state of California, what's next?
Well, I have been getting tapped on the shoulder to run for higher office, but I'm not gonna do that. Cause I honestly look at that as almost like a, um, like an alluring, you know, it looks good to the eye, sort of like that apple or whatever the forbidden fruit was, right? Whether it's a pear, I don't know, you know, a lot of granite, you know, but they thought, oh, it looks good to the eye, it looks tasty. And, and that's kind of been presented to me to go for something like that, but I think it's a distraction. I think it's a little bit of a hindrance because I, I'm like right where I belong right now.
Right on.
And we're doing a lot of good here in Huntington Beach. And it's not just in Huntington Beach, because then we as a city are kind of like that city set on a hill that's not hidden. We are, you know, giving light to a lot of the other cities within our county, we're leading the way. We're the first city to pass voter ID out of 482 cities in the entire state of California. But watch, this will begin to spread. Uh, we were victorious, we prevailed in, you know, a lawsuit, people were trying to see like, hey, how's this voter ID thing gonna go in this lawsuit? Well, we prevailed and suddenly now we've got other cities reaching out to us like, so how did you write that legislation?
Like, like back on the door now.
We'd like the template for that, you know? That's just one of the many issues, I, I do believe with God's help, you know, we will be victorious with this library issue and obscene content. And you know, a lot of people, they kind of whisper, these other cities, these other councils, they say, hey, we're watching and hey, we're rooting for you. And we say, why don't you come on in and join us? And they go, no, we're, we'll just sit this one out, watch how it plays out. So that's fine, we'll be a way maker, you know, we'll take out the machete and, you know, we'll work our way through this triple canopy jungle so that others could follow through. And so that's just the kind of way I look at it is like, it's not, it's for our city, but not just for our city, not just for our community. It's to be a leader amongst other cities, amongst, you know, the legion of other cities that are out there to kind of follow suit.
I love it, well, you know, a driven leader is somebody that is a person of influence, as I said earlier on. And whether it's influence of your friends, uh, early on in your high school and college days, your Navy SEAL teammates, your, the hundreds, if not the thousands and thousands of people that you've influenced by riding Seal of God and the impact that's made on so many lives, the thousands of people that you've spoken in front of you, cause I know, know you do a lot of public speaking engagements. And now the, the, whatever, the hundreds of thousands of people in the city of Huntington Beach that you're able to have an influential role. You know, Chad, it is an honor to call you a friend, but it is so fun to watch this and watch you set out on, on making change. And the change that you're making is making a massive impact on lives. And I'm so excited for this chapter and, and being present right now and obviously all the future chapters in front of us.
Super stoked to be a part of, uh, just the podcast and get to do this with you. And any excuse to get together is always a great, you know, opportunity. And I just thought of these words by C.T. Stud, maybe I can close on this, you know, he says, one life, it will soon pass and only what's done for Christ will last. Most people don't know the second part of it. And he says, and when I'm dying, how happy I'll be if the lamp of my life is burned out for thee. And so in the end, we have the opportunity to say, I did it for myself, I did it for me, 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 I don't want that. I want to say, no, I didn't burn out for me, I burned out for thee. I look at it like I am one of God's sled dogs and I'm just here to give him a good run.
I love it, well, I will tell you, I'm gonna, now, I just joined the Orange County Rescue Mission Board and it, boy, it would be great, you know, sometime in the next year to just get you in front of all these students that are changing their lives. Cause to see an inspiration for somebody that said, hey, look, I'm in the parking lot of Golden West College and it's not going as planned, but I've got another way bigger picture to be involved. And there are so many people that can change on a dime with that right perspective. And the perspective that you have taken and all of these different items have just been wonderful. And thank you for not being a person for me, but a person for thee.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate you, brother.
Yeah.
Thanks so much for taking the time.
Thank you.
Make it a great day.
Amen.
Thank you for joining us for this episode of Driven Leader Podcast with our guest Chad Williams, a Navy SEAL, a bestselling author, and now a city councilman in the city of Huntington Beach. But most importantly, somebody that is a true leader, someone that has led through adversity. So whether you've read the book and what goes into becoming a Navy SEAL or all the challenges that have come along the way of getting elected and the influence that he has in the community of Huntington Beach and really greater Orange County and beyond is amazing. So don't be confused, just because you're a leader of one, you could be a leader of many. And from his influence now, he's a leader of hundreds of thousands of people because he had that fortitude, that inkling when he was failing out of community college to say, I want to do more, I want to be more, I want to be a Navy SEAL. And that's just taken him to new heights. To each of you listening, thank you for listening and make sure that you remember you are a driven leader when you are a person of influence for yourself and for others and never underestimate how big of an influence you can be. And if you like what you heard today, don't forget to like, share, subscribe and share this with somebody else and enjoy your next episode. Make it a great day.